I'm ready. What's that?
You're ready to rock because we're going to start with you first.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Good evening. We're going to start this evening first with the Community Development Agency meeting, and as has been pointed out to me, I need to inform you this is a public, an open meeting. And posted here in the northwest corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act. So with that, I will ask for roll call be taken. Brennaman? Brennaman?
Here.
Coy?
Here.
House?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Reader?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Van Dyke?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Mayor? Here. There was an agenda provided you. I had asked for approval of that agenda.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded for approval of the agenda before us. If you will, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
And I need to have approval of the minutes of the July 27, 2009 Community Development Agency meeting.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Moved and seconded for approval of those minutes. If you will, again, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
And I will look to Randy then to give us some... Now, wait a minute. Am I doing this right as far as, okay, consideration of Resolution 2010-1, authorizing issuance of tax increment revenue bond for Crafts Incorporated?
I would move that we approve Resolution 2010-1.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution approved $141,500 of tax increment revenue bonds for the Crafts Sync redevelopment project. It was the project that demolished the old Roman Packing Company site and prepared it for development, and there's a truck center on that site now. On September 17, 2007, the agency, the Community Development Agency entered into a redevelopment agreement for this property. And according to the terms of that redevelopment agreement, the agency agreed to issue up to $335,000 of tax increment revenue bonds to pay for the costs related to the project for site development, demolition, asbestos removal, those types of things. We've got the assessed values in. We'll be collecting taxes on that project here. Probably in June, we'll receive the first tax receipts. So now that we know what the incremental valuation of the project is, we could size the bond issue. I want to get this in place prior to the time the first tax receipts received by the agency and make those payments to the bondholder. This $141,500 bond issued is the maximum amount of bonds that the incremental valuation will support, and that's how we came up with that number. Project redevelopment costs were greater than that. And this $141,500 of bond proceeds will be used to provide a grant to the redeveloper to reimburse him for the project costs as agreed to in the redevelopment agreement with a balance for issuance cost. Bonds have a final maturity of June 20, 2025, an interest rate of 6.5 percent, are payable only from incremental taxes on the property. They're not a direct obligation of the city or the agency. I'd answer any questions.
Any questions, comments, input? Anyone in the audience that has any questions to what Mr. Gates has just shared with us? If not, then we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? Or do you have to read in here, Bill? No? All right, let's vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2010-1 is adopted.
Your Honor, I would move adjourn as a Community Development Agency.
Second.
We've been seconded for adjournment. Please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Okay. And now I will call this meeting, February 16, 2010, meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. Again, this is an open meeting act. Once again, I will inform you, posted in this corner over here is the actual Open Meeting Act. Anybody so chooses to do some reading. I would ask you to rise with us, if you will, please, for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, we'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Van Dyke?
Here.
Reader?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Brennaman?
Here.
House?
Here.
Saunders?
Yeah.
Under action items here, approval of the consent agenda that was provided you in your packet.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
There's a motion for approval of that consent agenda. If you will, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
And again, I need action on approval of the full agenda.
I would move the full agenda, Your Honor. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Do you have a proclamation for your day? I see a lot of young men out here tonight in brown shirts. It's nice to have you all here. And there is a proclamation that I will be reading as this is, "Boys Scouts of America, Year of Celebration and a Century of Making a Difference." So with that, if I could, I would read this proclamation. Whereas the Boys Scouts of America Incorporated on February 8, 1910, and chartered by Congress in 1916 to provide an educational program for boys and young adults to build character, to train them in responsibilities of participating citizenship, and to develop personal fitness. And whereas for 100 years, the Boys Scouts of America has created a strong foundation of leadership, service, and community for millions of America's youth. And whereas the Boys Scouts of America is one of the nation's largest and most prominent values-based youth development organizations. And whereas the mission of the Boys Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetime by instilling in them the values of the Scout Oath and Law. And whereas the Boys Scouts of America provides a program for young people which builds the future leaders of this country by combining educational activities and lifelong values with fun. And whereas the Boys Scouts of America believes and through a century of experience knows that helping youth is a key to building a more conscientious, responsible, and productive society. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sue Fuhrman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim February 16, 2010 through December 31, 2010, as Boys Scouts of America, Year of Celebration, a Century of Making a Difference, right here in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, and encourage support and participation in the Boys Scouts of America organization and activities to help them celebrate this legacy. Sure, there's some one here that wants to come forward and accept the proclamation here. I also think we should have a couple of the gentlemen that might want to come forward and... If I could have the scouts come forward? I think it's also important that, as these young men come forward, there's also a huge group of adults that are responsible for what is happening within the city and with these young people. So if you'll just stand, I'd like to give you a round of applause, too, for what it is you do for us. And that's for the scouts, and maybe ask, could you do your scout oath for us? Who wants to lead?
Theirs might be different than mine's. The big kid one?
The big kid one? If you want to get forward and lead, that'd be great. How about you do that?
That's the first word? I've been here a while.
On my honor.
On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to obey the Scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight.
Very nice. I'm going to give you the certificate if I could, and then we will let you introduce yourself and talk a little bit about what it is that you're here for.
Thank you. My thanks to this Norfolk City Council and Mayor Sue Fuhrman for giving the Boy Scouts the opportunity to talk about one of the most exciting times in the history of the scouting movement. I am Tracy Yost, District Executive for the Boys Scouts of America. I provide support and service to eight counties in northeast Nebraska with a central location here in the city of Norfolk. We currently serve over 1,000 youth, and we have 300-plus dedicated registered adults who have enjoyed the accomplishment of eight Eagle Scouts in our district in 2009. We stand strong with 40 units consisting of packs for grades 1 through 5, troops for grades 6 through 12, venturing activities, and outstanding explorer posts with Faith Regional Health Services, and a scout reach program for Washington and Lincoln Elementary Schools in Norfolk. We have many wonderful partnerships with our local community as our charter partners, which I would like to thank, the American Legion, Big Bang Boom, the Knights of Columbus, the Norfolk Noon Coannis, and the VFW Club. We are excited to celebrate our 100th anniversary of boy scouting, not only in America, but in our communities. We celebrate a heritage of the nation's largest service organization for America's youth. We appreciate the opportunity to remind people of how scouting has made a real difference in neighborhoods and communities in northeast Nebraska. On a final note, I would like to thank our district sponsors, Affiliata Foods and New Core Steel for helping bring scouting to our communities. Along with our board members, a few of which are present here tonight, I'd like to recognize J. Paul McIntosh, Tom Jones, and Pat Suckup. And also our leaders who are here tonight celebrating with us, and certainly the scouts who make it all worthwhile and happen. In closing, we have words to live by. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Thank you for this wonderful proclamation tonight.
The great members of this wonderful hearing, we look forward to seeing you active in your community. Thanks to all of you for being here tonight. You bet. Thank you. And this is... That's the next one. Next on the agenda, a statement of support for the National Guard and Reserve, who are essential to the strength of the United States and well-being of communities. We recognize the National Guard and Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our communities. In the highest American tradition, the patriotic men and women of the Guard and Reserve serve voluntarily in an honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their country in time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society. If these volunteer forces are to continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required of the essential role of the Guard and Reserve in preserving our national security. Therefore, we join our employers in pledging that we fully recognize, honor, and enforce the Inform Services, Employment, and Reemployment Rights Act. Our managers and supervisors will have the tools they need to effectively manage those employees who serve in the Guard and Reserve, and we will continually recognize and support our country's service members and their families in peace, in crisis, and in war. Is there... Okay. Next on the agenda then, we're going to go to Big Red Keno, and I think you probably have some update information for us.
We do, Mayor. Thank you. And again, my name is Bill Harvey, General Counsel for Big Red Keno, and appreciate you having us here at the meeting tonight. Just a very brief update, I think, as you have probably seen, we do, we have made some progress on the construction. The weather has not, as you probably have noticed, been particularly cooperative with us this winter. We had to pick the snowiest winter in Nebraska history to build our building, but we're continuing to move through that, and we're pleased with the progress that we've made. We're still on track for our late spring completion of construction and opening, and so, you know, so we feel like that is still scheduled, pending, you know, any other unforeseen delays that we might run into. But so far, we seem to be on track, so that's good. As far as revenues go, just a brief update on revenues, we're pretty pleased with that. We've, we're still, you know, behind, we're still, you know, pretty significantly behind where we'd like to be and where we were at this time last year. But I think if you look at the December revenues, January revenues, and then once you see the numbers from February, you're going to see that we're at least on an upward slope as far as the revenues go. And so that's, you know, that's an encouraging, we think that's a very encouraging sign. A lot of it depends on, obviously, the economy and things, you know, somewhat outside our control, but from what the economists are telling us, things are looking pretty good for our state this year, so we're hoping that the economists are right, and if we stick on that track, we feel like we should have a pretty good year for, a pretty good year for revenues. So we think at least that we're on the right track. And happy to answer any specific questions you have about the construction or anything of that nature.
Thank you. Counsel? Nothing?
As Bill, you had mentioned before the meeting that your roof is about complete.
That's right. The, and, and just, you know, and I know it's kind of hard to get in there because of the snow and the mud and so forth, but, but yes, our four walls are up, and we do have the roof nearly complete. So once, you know, once we get that roof completed and it's enclosed, we'll be able to bring some heat in, heat the floors, and get, you know, and really get things cooking along in there. So it should be, and then, once we get that done, of course, you know, the weather, we're not so dependent on the weather. We still will be dependent on the weather in terms of getting our parking lot, you know, done, our landscaping done and all that, and the roads constructed and all that and so forth, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, visit...
I visited with your roofer this morning.
Oh, yeah.
They need warmer weather to get the glue to dry under that.
That's the problem we're running into right now, yeah. As soon as we get that, then we'll, we'll be okay. And it looks like we might get some, at least in the 30s here, but, you know, when I was looking, I was listening to long-range forecasts, and they said we're going to be stuck in this pattern for probably at least a couple more weeks. But, you know, spring's got to come at some time, right? That's what I keep saying to myself, so the never-ending winter here.
You're right.
But anyway.
Appreciate you being here. Hearing no other questions? We'll look forward to hearing from you again in another month or so.
Very good.
All right.
We'll look forward to it.
Thanks. Appreciate you taking the opportunity, you know, coming forward here. It's always great to have you here to let us know what's going on and give us the opportunity to answer the questions, so.
Well, we really appreciate the opportunity for communication. It really works well from our standpoint, too.
I agree.
So thank you very much.
I agree. Thank you. Before we move on to the next hearing, if any of you scouts do want to get up and leave, I'm sorry I didn't offer you that opportunity. You're sure welcome to stay, but I also understand if there's a few young folks that need to get home, please excuse yourself. You bet. Thank you for being here. With that, we will move to the public hearing to discuss the 2010 through 2015 One and Six-Year Street Improvement Plan. I'd like to open this hearing and look for Dennis to give us information.
Good evening. Again, we talk about the One and Six-Year Plan. Start off that one of the things that's occurring is that the estimate for our federal, our state share of the gasoline tax is about $100,000 less than what it was last year. That's due to a couple of things, one of which is the variable tax on the wholesale gas, as well as decreased consumption to a certain extent. And that shows up in the first two line items on our, on our plan here, which is the miscellaneous street contract work. I just lowered those by the $100,000 decrease that's anticipated. We're still working on our pavement management plan, and that's, when that comes forward, we may have some suggestions of looking at alternative revenue sources, you know, maybe a wheel tax or something along those lines. The Highway 35 project between Norfolk Avenue and Omaha Avenue is still held up, needs some congressional action to free up some earmarks that the state plans to use for that project. Short of the earmarks funds getting released for that project, it'll be quite some time before it occurs. 25th Street, Benjamin Avenue from US 275, that project is moving forward rather slowly. Reviews with the Department of Roads and the Federal Highway Administration are taking quite some time between iterations on the review. Hopefully, they've got a program developed that will move that along a little bit quicker, but we're hoping to get our environmental clearance documents approved and right-of-way completed in 2010 so that we can move forward with construction in 2011. That's a, that's a hope. There's no promises in that yet. Probably the last three projects I'm going to talk about are numbers 15, 16, and 17 on the sheet here. It's Northeast Industrial Highway. It's formerly been talked about as New Core Road. Going forward, it will be the Northeast Nebraska Industrial Highway. This is a road to connect Highway 35 and Highway 81, basically just north of Norfolk Iron and Metal, the ethanol plant there, about a half a mile south of New Core Road. It's a joint project between the City of Norfolk, Stanton County, Madison County, and the Railroad Transportation Safety District. The first phase of that project will be to start at Highway 35 and walk over to Victory Road. Phase two is from Highway 81 to First Street, and phase three is to connect the two pieces in the middle. Phase one is the project that will go forward first. Phases two and three may, the timing of those may get flip-flopped. It hasn't been totally decided which, which phase will become first. We stand away from the federal funds so that we can move forward with this project more quickly. Has about a $12 million total price tag. A million dollars of that is coming from New Core to reestablish their entrance. Stanton County's putting in $1 million. Railroad Transportation Safety District, $2 million. The City of Norfolk, $3 million. And the balance will come from Madison County or grants. With that, I guess I'll answer any questions anybody might have about the One and Six-Year Street program.
Talking about that New Core Road, I noticed you don't have a line from First Street to Victory Road. Does that mean we're not sure where that's going to go yet?
There's a line there. It just happens to be gray, and it's very difficult to see.
Oh.
But, no, we do know, we do know where it's going, Ivan, and it basically connects those in a straight line there, and it, it's an issue of the color contrast is pretty clear.
But is, will that go straight then, straight east from First Street over to Victory Road?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Then I, that's why I don't see it. Okay. I figured it would drop down and connect with that ethanol road there somehow, but you don't intend to do that.
No, what's happening there is, is that there's two railroad tracks out there, and they do a lot of switching both for Norfolk Iron and Metal, the ethanol plant in New Core, all occurs there, which is going to require a viaduct over the, over the railroad tracks. And they're so close to Victory Road that you can't get down off the top of the viaduct down to Victory Road, so we'll go over the top of Victory Road as well. So to get onto the, the new road, you'll have to take that little side route there from Victory Road up to the new Northeast Industrial Highway, so.
Any other questions, Counsel?
I guess the other thing that kind of disturbed me a little, line 14, Highway 81, and we're not going to do anything with that until 11:12, huh?
Well, that piece of Highway 81 is from about 600 or 700 feet south of Pazwalk, south through Omaha Avenue and over the viaduct. The piece that...
Well, this says Sherwood Road.
Okay, it goes down to Sherwood.
Yeah.
Okay. There's another project that starts 600 feet south of Pazwalk Avenue and goes to Alaska Avenue. That project is under contract and will be done in the 2010 construction season.
Okay.
And that's the piece where the real nasties are. That's not to say that there's not showing some distress in that piece further to the south, but I think the bigger distress is the piece to the north. All these projects on here, we're talking about a fiscal year that doesn't start until October 1 of 2010. So anything that will be done in 2010...
It's not even on...
Not on this project, or this listing of projects this evening.
Do we have anything from Michigan, from 7th Street to 13th Street in the, on the horizon?
That will be, we're looking at that as part of our miscellaneous street contract work, and yes, we do. And that's going to provide some match for a CR grant that Tom was here talking about a meeting or two ago.
Any other questions at all, Counsel?
Dennis, this is kind of off the subject a little bit, but the paving plan, where are we at on that as far as in relation to completion? I mean, are we like halfway there? Are we getting close?
We're getting close there. I believe there's some meetings scheduled in the next couple of weeks where the company's going to come down and work with staff, showing us where they're at and what they're, what they're at. That kind of got slowed down with some staff turnover in the Engineering Division.
So we can see the light at the end of the tunnel?
There is light coming at the end of that tunnel.
Good. Okay. Anyone else? This is an open hearing here, public hearing, so if there's anyone that does have questions, we got him. Okay, hearing done?
Oh, he's on the back there.
I'm sorry. You want to come forward, please? State your name for us. We need you to speak into the mic for us, if you would. State your name.
The name is Travis John Switzer.
Travis?
Just curious, how much money are you talking about? What is the sum total?
Of?
The money that's being spent on the roads here?
The local money is about $2 million a year.
Wow.
I agree, Travis. It takes a lot of money to take care of what we have in this city. It certainly does.
That's just incredible.
It is. We have an incredible responsibility, too, so.
I just heard that number, and I was just trying to add it all up in my head. $3 million from here, $2 million from there, $1 million from here. I was just adding it up quickly. We're between $7 and $10 million, and for what, a bridge, a viaduct?
Well, it's more than a bridge there.
Yeah, and it's not all city monies either, so, thanks, Ivan.
And where's the rest of it coming from? Federal grants, and the counties are participating as well?
Yes. Yes. Absolutely.
That project is a total of $12 million. It's one, two, three, four and a half miles long. It includes a viaduct over the railroad and the, and Victory Road.
I guess I was just trying to find out how much of this is coming from Uncle Sam, and how much of it's coming from the state and the counties?
Other than the $1 million that's coming from New Core, the other 11 million is coming from local taxing agencies.
Local and not federal?
No federal.
On that particular project?
I think that last sheet I gave you has the amount of dollars that are coming from the federal government, the state of Nebraska, the gasoline tax, and that type of thing.
Down here. Good Lord. You guys can't find a way to save a few hundred thousand here?
Yeah. I suppose we could if we really worked at it, but...
I mean, that might be...
There's a lot of potholes around town that people are really upset about, and they probably want us to spend more, actually.
But for this much, couldn't we repave every single road in Norfolk?
Not even close.
Not even close.
Good luck.
Not in today's dollars.
Not even close.
Take that times 10, and you might start scratching it.
Who are you guys contracting through?
I tell you what, stay tuned. All this stuff is always provided for you. It's always public, so, you know, you're welcome to come down and have conversation at any time.
Cool, because it's time to start watching you guys. That's a lot of money.
Hey, please do sign in for us, though, will you?
Sure.
So that we do have your name and address for us.
He can keep that if he wants to.
There you go.
I would, thank you.
Dennis, to clarify, you said some of the counties portion, Madison Counties, comes from grants, right?
They're, they're trying to get some grants on that. They don't have any commitments yet at this point in time. They don't have any commitments yet at this point in time.
Do you have a comparison to what other communities like Omaha or Lincoln or...
Well, and...
They get a lot more than we do.
Yeah.
I would point out that the methodology being used on the industrial road northeast at $12 million, that's actually a cost savings because we are using primarily local money for that. That means that a lot of the federal regulations and oversights that add money to the project, we're saving that money by doing it with local dollars.
And allows it to be in process now, too.
That also means that we can start that project now instead of waiting another...
Five years?
Five years.
And by doing that, you're taking the stress off of Benjamin, too. I mean, there's a lot of truck traffic heading out to those industries, so if we keep up the way we are, we're going to ruin a good road, end up fixing that and still having to build a good road. So it's, in a way, going to save us money on stress on some of our inner, inner roads also.
This isn't something that we just came about in the last couple of months. We've been working on this project, Dennis, probably for over 10 years, 15 years?
I want to say it's approaching 20.
Is it something that's essential, we need to get done?
Jay Paul, I see you with your hand up. Appreciate that. 60 million for one phase of the West Dodge Road.
I suppose that's an elevated highway, but...
That's a huge, yes. Thank you. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak? If not, I would close the public hearing and ask for a planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the City of Norfolk 2010-2015 One and Six-Year Street Improvements Plan on February 2nd. It was presented by the city engineer and discussed in its entirety with the planning commission. The Norfolk Planning Commission recommends approval of the One and Six-Year Street Improvements Plan.
Do we have a motion in a second yet?
I will make the consideration of Resolution 2010-4.
Second that, Your Honor.
We have a recommendation for approval here with a second. If you will, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2010-4 is adopted.
Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate that. And next, consideration of Ordinance 5106, amending Section 3-27 in the Official City Code to change the fee schedule for occupation tax related to alcoholic liquor to be consistent with state statute.
I would introduce Ordinance Number 5106.
Second.
I'll move in second. I guess I will look to you, Clint, to give us information here.
The, the ordinance is really kind of a housekeeping, housekeeping measure, reflects changes made that, in the statute, that we're reflecting in the ordinance. Answer any questions that you might have.
I have none. Does anyone have?
Clint, the levels of change in here, you're saying, are more on the level of the state.
What happens, Beth, help me out, the, the tax on these, the licenses, there's customarily, you pay one part of the state and...
Double.
Double, double it, so that it's, it's just reflecting the, keeping the double-double, if that makes sense.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, then? Can we have short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 3-27 of the Official City Code to change the fee schedule for occupation tax related to alcoholic liquor to be consistent with state statute, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, that being heard, I would ask for your vote, please.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5106 carries on first reading.
I had moved to suspend and make a motion to approve on 2nd and 3rd.
I'll see.
We have a motion and a second for suspension of the, and move right into second, suspend 2nd and 3rd, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for your vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5106 carries on 2nd and 3rd reading.
Seeing nothing else on the agenda, then, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion to adjourn, and I'd also like to thank the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts for coming. If they sat through the meeting, I think that their leaders should look at giving them a merit badge.
That's what we're working for back there, aren't we?
City Council.
Very good. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.